Thank you, President Levesque. Councilors, Atzulis?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Husack?
Present.
Levesque?
Here.
Letky? Mendez?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Shaughnessy?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Steinhilde?
Here.
You have 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Poynihan. If we could all please rise, mute your microphones, and I'm going to lead everybody in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And this time, it is now, if we could take just a little bit of time and remember, once again, what's happening in the Ukraine and that conflict, it still needs to be on the top of mind and what's happening there and its effect in the entire world. And so, let's be thinking about that. And those who may not have someplace to go for Thanksgiving, just remember those people and to be mindful of all that we can be thankful for this holiday season. So with that, moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, it would be time for public comment. I don't know.
We do have some public comment. Give me one second. Okay, first up for public comment is Steve Rizzo. Steve, if you could unmute, you have three minutes.
Mr. Rizzo, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Great, thank you.
Nice to see you, Gordon Hujaney.
Much better, thank you.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My wife and I have lived here in Comerquit since about 2002. And lately, we've heard a lot about repeating calls for more housing. And yes, we agree, affordable, more affordable housing is needed. But I'd like you to consider what happens when housing development causes the loss of wooded open space. Cape Cod is blasted with acres of wooded land, which is great. Unfortunately, a lot of this land becomes targeted by developers because it's typically away from the flood zones and it's not already protected necessarily. And some is privately owned and can be sold for cash. So, what I'd like to talk about is studies have shown that wooded land contributes 50% of the rainfall to the aquifer to recharge. Tree root systems, while absorbing some of the water, provide a ready path into the ground layers by breaking up the aquifer layers. The same land that has, if it's developed, take the same land and develop it, only 15% of that rainfall gets to the aquifer. For various reasons, the ground is more compacted, there's runoff from driveways, et cetera. And mostly, this 15%, whatever gets there, is lost to occupant use once the development's finished. Clean water from wooded parcels is not lost. Another consideration is carbon dioxide. A single acre of woodland captures about 2.5 tons of CO2 per year. And that's not an insignificant number. And that's per acre. Multiply that out by the number of acres that we have, and climate change is mitigated by wooded land. New development that removes these important attributes is counterproductive to the environment we have here on the Cape. How many acres of wooded land can we afford to lose before we lose our clean water recharge for the aquifer? Wounded land provides open space for public use, habitat for wildlife, carbon capture, as I mentioned earlier, which limits the effects of climate change. And most of all, it's clean water for the aquifer recharge, all of which must be considered as an offset against negative impacts from development. I realize the difficulties in balancing development versus open space. However, we must consider the benefits of open spaces beyond being a commodity. I'd like the town council, and this is the reason for my comment, like the town council to consider how important wooded acreage is. And I'd like to see a moratorium on clearing any wooded acreage unless it can be shown by a review process that that clearing is for the purpose of development does not inhibit the aquifer recharge with clean water. It does not increase carbon emissions and will not contribute to nitrogen runoff or other water pollution. Essentially, an environmental review. Just one more step that says, you can't take this wooded property if it has a benefit to the aquifer and to our environment. And the whole idea--
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up for public comment, we have Rosemary Bouset. Ms. Bouset, you can speak, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I am Rosemary Bouset. I live in Centerville, and I'm 86 years old. And my doctor has suggested to me that I have cannabis to help me sleep because it's not so filled with chemicals. I have to drive to Mashpee, on an average of once a month, to get my sweet dreams cannabis so I can sleep. At 86, I don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to make that trip on 28 to Mashpee. And I really feel that the town of Centerville should be looking to bring in a dispensary, if not for any other reason, convenience and the tax dollar it brings in. Mashpee's getting rich on Centerville dollars. So that's what I'd like to say. And I'm absolutely in favor of opening a dispensary in Centerville. And I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Bouset.
I hope you'll take my comments to heart because it's amazing how many Centerville people have to drive to Mashpee just to accommodate pain. I mean, it isn't a bad idea to have cannabis. It helps with glaucoma, it helps with pain, it helps with sleep. And it isn't, you're not taking a bunch of steroids and you're not taking a bunch of chemically filled pills. So, I hope that you'll be listening to those of us that really need it and will consider what you will receive in taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Bouset, have a good night.
Thank you so much for listening. Bye.
That's all we have for public comment at this time.
Okay. Now, it would be time for councillor response to public comment. Councillor Atzulis, please.
Just responding to Mr. Rizzo's comments. I'm just curious, are there particular projects that I'm not aware of that are taking wooded space? I mean, I know that the Twin Brooks is not a wooded space. It's a golf course right now. And I believe the other project is in Independence Park, which is, Independence Park, which I don't know that that's-- I mean, I'd be curious to know. Mr. Rizzo, if you're listening, feel free to contact me. I'd be interested to know which projects you're referring to when you talk about wooded open space being taken for housing. I just was curious to know what that is. Because the two that I'm aware of, I personally don't see it that way, but I could be missing something here. And to Ms. Bouset's comments, you know, I think that it's interesting that you highlight that you have to make a long drive. And I think a lot of people are in that situation. It's unfortunate that our society is still demonizing dispensaries with the process they have to go through to get approvals and run their businesses. It's certainly not the same for liquor stores. And as we know, alcohol does far more damage to our society and individuals than natural products are. So, I don't disagree with Ms. Bouset. I'd say having one in Centerville would be great, but that would be a challenging hill to climb. So I think we'll focus on what we have on the table now and see what we can do moving forward. But thank you for your comments, both of you.
Thanks, Councillor Atzulis. Councillor Mendez, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. This isn't actually pointed at Mr. Rizzo, but it kind of goes with the same stuff he was talking about. People in town have to understand that right now, the population we have in town, we don't have enough people here for essential services. The town is looking for help, the hospital is looking for help, and we just don't have the population here for that. I mean, it's not the town I grew up in, or Nick, or Jen, or Tracy, or the people that are from here. We would all love to preserve all the wooded space and all the open space, but it's just not feasible at this point. We're either going to expand our town as a town or going to die as a town. Those are the kind of the choices that we have right now. We do not have the younger population for essential services in this town right now. And that's where we're at. And just so you know, we're all grappling with that in our own way. Nobody's happy about it, but that's, you know, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Mendez. Any other councillor comment, response? Councillor Shaughnessy, please.
Thank you, President Levesque. Mr. Rizzo, I thank you so much for your comments, all of which are true. In addition, I would like to add for all of our constituents, leave your leaves on the ground because the leaves in your yard also help the water to drain into the soil more slowly versus just running off into our stormwater and especially after a drought year. Those are just as important. I would not be opposed to sort of prioritizing that if there was a choice between two options, one parcel that's been developed and is being renovated versus one that has to be clear cut. You know, do I think it would be bad to prioritize building on the parcel that's already been cleared? I feel like a lot of the uncleared land acreage on Cape Cod belongs to the federal government, which is one of the reasons I'm opposed to the new machine gun range at the base. I wanted to say for Mrs. Bouset, I think it's admirable for someone in their 80s to step up and speak about the benefits of cannabis. I have a number of clients who know the benefits. And I also see the clients who are with the alternatives, Ambien, Trazodone, and they're heavy meds for sleeping. You wake up and they're still feeling groggy and under influence. So, I thank you for speaking up, not only on behalf of your fellow seniors about the benefits, but I also think it's important to realize that it is a difficulty to get out to Mashpee for people that are using cannabis to help them with various things. So, thank you for speaking out, I appreciate it.
I think it's important, and I mentioned this the last time too as well, is that the item that we have in regards to, it has to do with the zoning in regards to the medical marijuana zone that we currently have and the borders of that, what we have as far as a setback goes. Now, yes, by reducing that setback, it does make it actually more permissible and possible to have a medical marijuana dispensary inside that zone. But at the same time, I just, to make sure that the public knows that it's not, you know, us deciding of thumbs up or thumbs down a medical marijuana, that's not, medical marijuana dispensaries necessarily aren't on trial. We have a zone that is designated for that. And at this point in time, it's prohibitive with the setbacks that we have that don't line up with the state guidelines or recommended guidelines, I should say, that it's not really actually possible because of where the houses of worship and the place of gathering for children is, it makes it possible. So it isn't so much that medical marijuana use or its benefits are on trial, per se. So just to clarify for the general public that that's not really what we're moving on tonight. So, well, thank you very much, Ms. Bouset, for your making us understand that there is a need for that permission and possibility of a medical marijuana dispensary in the town of Barnstable and how useful that would be. So, thank you. And as far as Mr. Rizzo, only thing I can think of as far as what he might be talking about is that there is a, something being brought before the CPC, the board CPC board, in regards to a piece of land that's under agreement that was originally owned by the Barnstable Housing Trust. And somebody's trying to actually take that piece of property and possibly build some affordable housing there, actually do a 40B, so it would be affordable housing in the village of Comerquit, or I should say, the area of Comerquit in the village of Barnstable. And so, that is possibly coming before the CPC. I don't know if anything's been approved or not, but that is maybe in question in what Mr. Rizzo was referencing as far as that goes. It doesn't have to do with any current projects. It's factually very much the project and the idea of utilizing the piece of property, which quite honestly, was put aside and supposed to be used for housing and actually to see if that, again, very much in its infancy as far as a process. So, that's probably why the council doesn't really fully understand what you might be referencing. But that would be, I think, what he was referencing in regards to that. So, and if anybody has any questions in regards to that, we could talk more offline. Any other councillor response? Okay. Right, so, moving forward to the end of public comment and response to public comment, now would be time for Town Manager Else and Town Manager Communications.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mark Else, Town Manager. This is my update for the period of November 4th through November 17th. We'll begin this evening with Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development, providing an overview of the Great Streets Downtown Hyannis, Hyannis Main Street's transportation network and streetscape project. Director Jenkins, please.
Thank you, Town Manager Else. As noted, we kicked off this week a project that we initially were calling Great Streets Downtown Hyannis. And this was an initiative meant to look at our streets in downtown Hyannis, not just as places for our cars, but as truly great public places that could serve residents and visitors in the town of Barnstable. And this is a topic, an issue, an idea that has a lot of history here in Hyannis. How streets are used, what direction traffic is oriented in, connectivity between key destinations downtown, how parking is managed, and so on. You know, there's been an incredible amount of work and evolution done over the years around this topic. So, the initiative to look at this again, this time through the lens of creating a great walkable downtown with an irresistible historic and maritime character, really came from, you know, what we call around the office, the barrier project that was initiated during COVID. And really, you know, as a pilot, we were able to see that by rethinking how we use our streets, we can make a significant difference in the vibrancy and activity downtown. We can encourage outdoor business. And we can really, we really found that Main Street gained that atmosphere. And I believe, you know, based on, certainly based on the anecdotal data that we collected, excellent economic success for the years that we did that project. So, in response to this, Planning and Development, with support of the Town Manager's Office and working closely with the Department of Public Works, brought on a team to take a look, to, again, take a look at this project, as I explained. And this is a team that's led by, I'll call him a renowned urban planner, Jeff Speck, together with the transportation engineers at StanTech, that have brought really exceptional experience in doing this in Main Street and downtown across the country and has brought an incredible amount of data with them in terms of how, again, how streets can be oriented to improve safety, to improve the sense of place in a community, and how they can support, again, the economic success of businesses that are located there. And we started this project by doing a lot of analysis on the ground, traffic counts, modeling, and so on, you know, specific, with a specific focus on some of the key intersections that we all know, I think, need improvement based on their safety record, based on how difficult it is to cross them. And we went into this project, I think, with, at least personally, with a very open mind in terms of what the outcomes might be as good planners do, you know, we don't want to predispose ourselves. And it's become very quickly over apparent, I think, over the last few days that our Great Streets Downtown Hyannis project has become a two-way Main Street Downtown Hyannis project. The, again, the team that we have with us has experienced doing this with incredible positive success in many communities. At this point, we held a public forum to kick off this project on Tuesday night. It had a great turnout, we had over 100 people there really explaining sort of the fundamentals behind this approach. And we have, we've had seven of eight stakeholder meetings with, you know, what we consider sort of the key players in downtown Hyannis from, you know, residents and property owners and business owners and public safety officials and so on. And, you know, I have to say that, at this point, the initial concept of converting our, converting our one-way pairs at Main Street and South Street has been received with an incredibly warm reception by all of those parties. Not to say that there haven't been some reoccurring issues that have certainly come up, loading for businesses, being one of them, and so on. But it's clear that this is, that at least initially, at the very early stages of this process, this is the way these recommendations are going. And, and again, learning from, learning from other communities. This group is also responsible for the one-way to two-way conversion in Lowell, Massachusetts, that has, again, proven out a lot of, a lot of the positive outcomes. And thinking about how those could be transferred down here to Main Street, I think is very exciting. So, they will be here through, they will be here through midday tomorrow, again, walking the streets, talking to the community. And then the next step in this process is for them to come back in their late January, early February with a set of conceptual alternatives for the project. But again, this project was designed to be one that was not a planning study, but that was essentially a preliminary concept, a preliminary design. And in talking with our team this evening, they think that there is the very real opportunity with a small to moderate amount of investment to be able to implement a solution like this as early as summer 2024. So, we have a long way to go in this process, but I wanted to be incredibly open with the councillor and with the councillors and certainly the public about how this, this project is progressing. And if you didn't get a chance to watch the presentation on Tuesday night, we have a project website. It is, it is a tiny URL, a tiny URL, Hyannis Great Streets, where you can get an overview of the project, leave comments, watch the presentation by Jeff Speck and Jason Schreiber at StanTech on the research and the data that they brought to these recommendations. And we hope that you'll continue to engage with us as we go through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins, for that. And at this point in time, before we continue with the Town Manager Report, would anybody like to comment on what Director Jenkins? I know there was a number of councillors that got to attend some of these seminars and meetings. Oh, I'm sorry, I see Councillor Cullum has her hand up, please. And you are muted, so.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the report. What are the solutions that are put forth for the loading issues? Like the loading zone issues or the unloading of trucks? I mean, that is a major concern because there's so many restaurants there and the deliveries happen, I mean, there's at least 10 vendors for every restaurant, right? Liquor, beer, produce. I just wonder what, what solutions are put forth?
Yeah, so we had, again, six of seven stakeholder meetings. So at this point, we don't, we don't have a plan. But the response that, that I think they have found success with in other communities are designated loading zones. We have no designated loading zones currently on downtown Hyannis. Some would be permanent, some would be timed, so loading zone prior to noon time and then reverting to on-street parking. But that is, that sort of curve of management has become an art in many communities and one that we would certainly have to learn from and import into downtown Hyannis if we were going to make this work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Cullum. Councillor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque. And thank you, Director Jenkins, for enabling this presentation. I watched it on Channel 18 with my husband, and we were very impressed with a fresh look at the traffic patterns in Hyannis with a holistic approach on safety and movement of car, of traffic and parking. And I welcome, I welcome this new approach to downtown. I sit, I did sit as a liaison to the Hyannis Historic, Main Street Waterfront Historic District. And, and I understand some of the issues that they were, that they addressed. But this, this comprehensive approach, I applaud the planning for doing. And I'm glad that you're dovetailing with DPW on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Mendes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate Elizabeth and the staff. I was very impressed. And for a lot of residents, longtime residents, having Main Street and South Street turn into two ways, dreams come true. My grandparents, my parents used to talk about that all the time. And it's very innovative and I can't wait to see it done. Thanks again.
Counselor Mendes. Counselor Assis, here's your hand up, please.
Yeah, so I happened to attend the kickoff meeting along with my fellow counselors. And then I had the opportunity to go to a leadership meeting the following day. And a lot of great ideas thrown around. I mean, you know, and the going back, going back to a two-way Main Street, to me, makes sense. Those, you know, I was probably, we were, some of us were probably a year old, but back in 1969 was when they changed over to the two-way, the one-way option. So we're kind of going back in time, but I think it's well overdue. And I applaud, you know, staff and consultants for highlighting that as something important to consider. So again, I think we're moving in the right direction as far as that's concerned. And hopefully something get done in the near term and this doesn't drag on for too long, as some things tend to do, especially productive things that can help us all out in improving the downtown area, which we all, which we all love and want to see it continue to improve. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Assis. Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Elizabeth, you and your team and the consultants really have done an impressive job this week in getting people to the meetings and bringing forth information that feels so, as Counselor Clark said, fresh and, you know, kind of ready to go. And I echo Counselor Assis. Let's not put any self-imposed barriers up for making this happen. I know that, you know, the overwhelming reason for doing this is safety. And how can we, you know, look the other way when we have a way to reduce pedestrian, not fatalities, but pedestrian accidents, you know, enhancing, you know, lanes for bikes and, you know, even for cars. I just think there's just so many positives here. And yes, there are some issues that will be raised. The loading is definitely one that I heard a couple of times. But it seems like for every problem, there's a way around it. So I encourage all efforts to full steam ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnep. Any other counsel comment? I've told the story a number of times this week that my first Massachusetts Municipal Association seminar, symposium, that I attended, actually with Vice President Schnep was there as well. And Mayor of Boston, Michelle Wu, was actually in the room as well. The, was with Jeff Speck in regards to Walkable Cities, his book. And in coming back from that MMA conference, and I think the first conversation I had with Director Jenkins is, we should really consider maybe thinking about making Main Street two ways again. And here we are. So it took some time. It took some, COVID had an effect, I think, on getting them here. It was a little bit slower than we anticipated, but they are here. And they are giving us good feedback and educating the public in regards to the benefits of such things. Yes, safety, but what safety does and what in regards to Main Street Hyannis, you know, it's not necessarily the connecting point. I think, again, giving credit to Vice President Schnep from connecting, like, say, Dennis to Mashpee as far as a way to get to where you're going. It makes it more this idea of what we're thinking about is making downtown Hyannis more of a destination, more of a place to come to, where it is safe to walk, where it's, you know, I guess there's statistics out there proving that with stop signs, there actually, traffic moves quicker than having lights and things of that nature, these different concepts. And the point being that, you know, the reference, the points, the points of reference that they can go back to Lowell, you know, places all over the country, Irvine, California, Cedar Rapids, I mean, all these different places, not only locally but nationwide, that when they implement certain things and how it revitalizes downtown, not only from a safety perspective, but also from a business perspective and seeing that the growth dollars and the business is thriving. So again, this is, the cake's not necessarily baked necessarily. I don't want to give away different ideas. There's things to go through and it's not necessarily going to happen overnight. But I think what the council, and I think what I would like to see happen as well possibly, is this implementation of these new concepts are old concepts, really. And being discussed and being implemented in a smart way. And again, using, you know, Town Manager L's and his staff, DPW engineers, and working together to try to, again, revitalize, continually revitalize downtown and make it the destination that so many downtowns, even on the Cape, have become. So that being said, I applaud Elizabeth Jenkins and her team and thank you for presenting today. And again, this is just all brand new. It's not even done yet, right? So, but I thought it was important to have this discussion right now and while, you know, strike while the fire is hot and talk about the topic while it's fresh on some of the counselors and the public's mind. So thank you again. Really appreciate your efforts in moving this forward and looking forward to see what's going to happen next. So thank you. I didn't see any last minute comment. Okay, not seeing any, I would hand Baton back to Town Manager L's to continue with the report, please.
Thank you, President Levesque and Director Jenkins. Next item on my agenda is the Town of Barnstable, an update on the Housing Production Plan. I know there have actually been some public comment recently as to how to participate in this process. The Housing Production Plan helps municipalities identify the best way to meet their housing needs and shape the location type and design of development. This plan will consider best practices for promoting diverse housing options that will align with the community's vision and goals. Communities with wide variety of housing types and programs are stronger, more diverse places to live with higher quality of life for residents. Our current Housing Production Plan expires next year and we are hard at work to update our Housing Production Plan. Community engagement is an integral part of this plan and our goal is to reach as many Barnstable community members as possible. And we're inviting you to join our hybrid public forum on Wednesday, November 30th at 6:00 PM. This forum will be hosted in person in Barnstable Town Hall, as well as virtually through a Zoom webinar. This event is free and open to the public through registration for the virtual option. So make sure you do that if you want to participate virtually. And I provided the council, you know, a link to that. During the forum, the town will present draft goals and strategies that provide opportunity for community members to participate. You can learn more about the existing Housing Production Plan at the town's housing and community development website. And Director Jenkins is still here. So if anybody has any questions about this one, and President Levesque, I'd like to just pause for a moment in case anybody does. She can answer them, so.
Thank you, Town Manager L. Anybody have any questions for Director Jenkins? Okay, not seeing any. Please continue.
All right, thank you. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2024. The FY 2024 Capital Improvement Plan submissions were due on November 7th with a staff review of the proposed CIPs beginning on November 28th as per our Budget Action Calendar. A public hearing was held on November 15th at 11:00 AM for proposed changes to various town permit and program fees that take effect on January 1st, 2023, as well as on proposed taxi meter rate increases for taxis licensed to operate within the town of Barnstable, effective January 1st, 2023. The hearing can be viewed on the town's website. We'll continue to take public comments through December 14th. Information regarding the proposed changes are available on the Town Manager's webpage of the Town of Barnstable's, you know, on the Town of Barnstable's website. So please take a look if anybody wants. And if you want to provide comment, any means, letter, email, other is critical and, you know, get them into me prior to December 14th. Because again, the proposed rate changes are under review. And for any and all budget information, you can find those in our town open budget website and in many cases on our town website. On June 1st, 2022, the Town of Barnstable was informed of regulatory revisions. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection was developing to ensure that timely action, our actions are taken to restore and protect coastal estuaries that have been impacted by excessive nitrogen pollution. Mass DEP is proposing to amend Title V regulations to enhance protection of invasions and estuaries, particularly on Cape Cod, the islands, and southeastern Massachusetts from nitrogen pollution originating primarily from wastewater, primarily from onsite septic system wastewater. That's what Title V, that section of the regulations covers. Mass DEP proposed regulation, it's 314 CMR 21, provide a watershed permit approach to control nitrogen and other pollutants from entering the invasions and estuaries. The Mass DEP will conduct their public hearings, one of which will be an in-person and remote hearing here at Barnstable Town Hall on December 5th, 6:00 PM. Comments on the proposed revision may be presented orally at the public hearing. And I provided the links so that you could look at the information on the public hearings that DEP has put out. And I've also provided the links in my report to look specifically at the proposed changes to Title V and to the watershed permit regulations. At the November 10th Cape Managers Meeting, we discussed the proposed regulations with varying comments and concern amongst the intending towns. I had a subsequent discussion with Christie Senatore, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission, regarding these proposed regulation changes. And we agreed to share comments on said proposed regulations. Written comments are due on December 16th, 2022. And I will keep you advised as this matter progresses. We continue to review of permits filed with regulatory agencies regarding the proposed Phase 3 landing of cable in Barnstable, Commonwealth Wind project. At the presentation back in March of 2022, the proposed landing location for cable in Oysterville was shared with the Town Council. Commonwealth Wind shared the information following their filing for site assessment with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. I plan to commence the host community agreement negotiations with Commonwealth Wind in late November, as authorized by Town Council. My most recent discussions focused on Commonwealth Wind's request to delay their filing with the Department of Utilities in order to renegotiate their power purchasing agreement. Relevant to that, I had a conversation today with them. They are still in discussions with both the outgoing administration, the incoming administration, the Department of Utilities, and the energy industry businesses that are engaged in this discussion. And they expect that those discussions will continue to progress. Relevant to filing environmental and project permitting, I think the last time I reported, and I'll speak to it a little bit here because we're still in the review timeframe for the ENF that was filed with MIPA. But since my last report, Commonwealth Wind has proceeded with this. They have not stopped. They have filed with the Energy Facility Siting Board and they are continuing with their filing of environmental and project permits with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So that's what I had advised council would occur. That's what has occurred. That's why I had recommended, and you have authorized me, to proceed relevant to a host community agreement. Back to, on September 30th, Commonwealth Wind proceeded with filing an environmental notification form and supporting documents to the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Agency Office of the Secretary of Energy Environmental Affairs. I provided you the links to these documents. You know, there is a comment period on this. They just held a well-attended meeting in Oysterville relevant to this. And it was a project scoping session scheduled and held by MIPA. Wasn't a town, wasn't a town scheduled meeting. This is standard for MIPA hearings. So now what we need to do is complete the review of the ENF and make comment on it orally and writing and get those comments in by November 29th. I've given you the link to that MIPA website. Staff is reviewing the ENF and plan to submit comments within that time period. And again, I encourage people to take a look in that document at Attachment D because it does lay out the various permits and their tentative schedule, they being Commonwealth Wind, as to how they intend to proceed with the permitting of this project. And in my review of that, they are holding with that schedule. So I wanted to give you an update there. Some good news, not that that wasn't good news, some good news. Sean Hogan joined our Asset Management Division of the Town Manager's Office as our Environmental Sustainability Manager. And back at the beginning of this week, he comes to the town from the Tufts Urban and Environmental Planning Program, holds bachelor's degrees in economics and earth science, master's degrees in urban and environmental planning and international relations. He's currently in the process of familiarizing himself with the town, researching our renewable energy installations, looking at energy efficiency initiatives and commencing meetings with key individuals in an effort to build a sustainable and resilient future for our community. Do you remember, this was one of several positions in the Town Council's strategic plan. We have fulfilled this. We've also fulfilled the grant coordinator. So, you know, and we're in the process of filling some of the, one other position that you had identified. So hopefully I'll report out to you on that shortly. So that's exciting news and we expect we will progress with this effort and build upon the great work that David Anthony and other staff have been doing in this area. I want to thank the Youth Commission for hosting the Ninth Annual Community Substance Abuse Prevention Program in the Barnstable High School Library. Parents and guardians were invited to attend the forum, learn up-to-date information and have their questions answered on this important topic by a panel of local experts. They were also able to see the hidden-in-plane-site trailer that also helps parents and guardians identify where youth might be hiding illegal substances. Thank you again, Youth Commission. You do many things for us and certainly this is a wonderful example of the type of work that you do for our community. The Town of Barnstable, Channel 18, continues its award-winning video production, receiving four awards at the Alliance for Community Media Northeast Regional Annual Video Festival that was held on November 12. We took a third, second, and two first place. Congratulations, staff. Good job for your work. And being recognized for public education, government, media, and local access station in northeast, which includes all of New England and New York, is a great accomplishment. Recognized for the hard work put into creating meaningful and informative content that matters for the residents and the visitors of the town of Barnstable, shows that our community is committed to excellence and it's paying off. Channel 18 has won 29 awards. Channel 18 has won 29 awards, you know, since 2010. And so, thank you again. Good job, staff. That concludes the Town Managers' Report at this time. I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Director of Public Works, Rob Steen, to give our second Town Council meeting of any month, Water Resource Planning update. But at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Town Manager Ls. Any questions or comments in regards to the Town Manager Report up to this point? I will say congratulations to all those in Channel 18 once again, Paula Hershey, Lynn Poian, Sarah, and Stone, and Liz, for your award-winning content. And I remember making a similar announcement right before COVID. There was a big announcement, and then we were announcing the studio being opened and all that was going there, and then COVID happened and shut it down. And now it's open again, doing it again, back to making great content and looking forward to, you know, even utilizing that moving forward on issues all townwide, you know, issues and what's happening. So thank you again for that. Any other council comment? Okay, not seeing any. We'll just move forward with Assistant D P W Director, Rob Steen. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Steen with the Department of Public Works. Sir, could I have you load that presentation for me, please?
Yep, just one second. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. This is the wastewater and C O P update for the month of November 2022. Sir, if you could advance the slide. I will begin tonight with the construction update for the Strawberry Hill Road sewer project. This project continues to be on schedule for completion of this spring. We have completed work with the sewer, completed sewer work in the Craigville Beach Road and Strawberry Hill Road, south of West Main Street, for a total of almost 17,000 linear feet of sewer. Currently, we are working on sewer project, on the sewer project in Finney's Lane. And we are also working on water work within the Finney's Lane area. And we are working on the pump station at 528 Craigville Beach Road. Slide, please. For the Route 28 East project, the main effort to date has been on the pump station at the corner of Finney's and 28. We have finally reached depth with that. That was a bit of an effort due to groundwater and things of that nature. And it's quite an excavation if you've had a chance to go look at it. But we are now down to depth and starting to pour the foundation slab and will soon be coming back out. So that's good signs there. We've also, with that project, had an opportunity to start to strike into Finney's Lane a little bit, and that will continue. Work on 28 itself is scheduled to begin in the spring of 2023, and we're anticipating this project will be wrapped up by winter of 2023. Slide, please. The Minion Wind Project is reporting that they are on schedule as well. They are reporting that they have ongoing work with the Duck Bank on Strawberry Hill Road. They are also working at Coveville Beach Parking Lot and anticipate that will be done in spring of 2023. And at this point, they're really pulling wires and testing and doing things of that nature. And in the spring, that will be paving of the parking lot. Speaking of paving, we are anticipating final paving on Craigville Beach Road, West Main Street, Independence Drive, and Addit Lane, some of which has actually already begun, but all of which will be complete started soon and completed before the Christmas season. Next spring, we'll be doing paving on Strawberry Hill Road, and then in the fall, Finney's Lane and Willpocket Lane. Slide, please. Wanted to take a minute to just sort of give you a very quick update on where we're at with the nitrogen reduction evaluation for the Water Push Control Facility. This is really because it's relevant to the conversation we're going to have later tonight regarding the headworks. And so that's an old business item that we'll be talking about later. Needed this sort of background to it. Slide, please. As you may remember, the goals of this project were to achieve the lowest possible treated nitrogen levels. Three milligrams per liter has been the target for the time. We also want to make sure we were going to sustain some flexibility for future wastewater requirements of the plant and wanted to do it in a cost-effective way. Slide. We had a very large selection of alternatives to start with. As we started looking at those, those quickly narrowed down to sort of four primary alternatives, which we then took a deep dive on. Those four alternatives were to utilize an M L E process with tertiary sand filter behind it. And just for reference, the M L E process is what's currently at the Water Push Control Facility. We then looked at various iterations of a Bardenfo, four-stage Bardenfo, one with nothing behind it, one with a tertiary sand filter behind it, and one with a membrane bioreactor behind it. Slide, please. So the results to date have been this. What we were estimating is that three of those options will achieve the three milligrams per liter that we're looking for. One of them, the four-stage Bardenfo, just in of and by itself, will not. And one of those options, the four-stage Bardenfo with an M B R behind it, will actually exceed that and exceed it as much as anything will, as far as we can tell at this point in time. So that was really promising. We then took a look at the capital costs of these things. Slide, please. And found this, that of the three options that would actually achieve three milligrams per liter, that being alternate one, three, and four, the least expensive of them was the four-stage Bardenfo. Number of reasons for that, not least of which is the fact it can really leverage a lot of the existing tankage that's there and utilize that to sort of limit the construction as much as possible. None of them, though, as you'll note, from the left axis, from the Y axis, are inexpensive. Slide, please. So the committee then has selected the four-stage Bardenfo with an M B R behind it as sort of the item we want to move forward with. This will provide us with the highest quality effluent of the things that we looked at. It's a proven technology that's within our climate area, and it can utilize much of the existing tankages I've already noted. Slide, please. Why this is relevant to tonight's discussion is the M B R that follows that four-stage Bardenfo for the fourth alternative requires fine screening ahead of it. Our current headworks doesn't have that. Now, as reference, our current headworks is built in 1973. It is degrading. We have problems with the areas you see listed in front of you here already. And it was scheduled to be replaced within the next five years anyways. Because of the selection for the nitrogen project, we are accelerating that, which is why tonight we are going to be asking you for design and permitting costs for the headworks upgrade so that we can design that at the same time as we are designing the nitrogen improvements so that they work together as they need to going forward. Slide, please. I know that was, I know that was quick, but wanted to get you that update, and we happen to take any questions.
Thank you, Assistant Director, it's Rob Steen. Any questions? Counselor Clark, please.
Thank you very much, President Levesque, and thank you very much, Rob, for your presentation. When you mentioned that the committee selected the four-stage M B R, who sits on the committee or what's the committee made of?
So that is the Division Supervisor for the Water Push Control Division, Andy Boulay. That is the Town Engineer, Griffin Bowden, and that is myself.
Thank you. It looks like an easy choice to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Clark, please. I'm sorry, Counselor Starr, excuse me.
Thank you, President Levesque. Mr. Steen, I've got a question. So if we get the effluent down to three parts, what is it?
Probably 2.75 with the alternative we took.
Yeah, three milligrams per liter. Can the present facility handle that infiltration into the ground? Or do we still need more area to do that or a different area?
So we're independently, so there's two different questions here. One is can the facility treat the flow that's coming to it? The answer to that is yes. Two is can we dispose of the wastewater that comes from it? We are currently finishing up the work. If you remember correctly, there was a number of efforts you had us do looking at alternatives for effluent disposal and ways to address and mitigate the question you're referring to. We are wrapping that memo up now, thinking we're going to be back in front of you with discussions on that probably in a couple of months to sort of talk to that. I will tell you without ruining the surprise, I feel very good about what we are finding and very good about the alternatives we have and think we'll be able to very successfully find some pretty innovative ways to mitigate the concern you're expressing.
Okay, thank you very much. That sounds good.
Good.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Great question. Vice President Schnepp, you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Rob. Very nice, concise presentation. I felt like I got a lot of information about the status of our projects. I'm going to throw something out left field. I was reading the paper today, and a lot of other of our fellow towns are trying to deal with these wastewater issues. And I know Sandwich is, looks like they're relying on working with Joint Base Cape Cod to be dealing with their wastewater. Is there continuing discussions that we're having with Joint Base Cape Cod for any wastewater solutions for Barnstable?
So I am, Assistant Town Manager Clyburn's probably in a better position to comment on that than I am. I know that those conversations have happened. I've not been at the table for them, so I can't tell you exactly what's come from them. But my understanding is those are continuing and moving in the directions that they need to move in at this time.
Okay. All right. I guess I was surprised to know that the Joint Base Cape Cod had the capacity to treat wastewater for at least the town of Sandwich. So I'm assuming that they have underutilized capacity there? Is that the...
They have some, they have some capacity there, but they, like what was referred to by Counselor Starr, like us, have limitations in terms of disposal. What they really, and not they track, and they now have studied, they're starting to look at it, is how do they deal with their disposal issues as well if they're going to ramp that plant up? And that's always been the issue there. If you know that plant, the plant is on the base, their disposal capacity is 11 miles away over by the canal. And there's real limitations to that, and that's what they've got to wrestle with to figure out how to deal with that.
Okay, that was the outfall that they were talking about, wasn't it?
That's an option. It's not the option. It's been discussed. You could expand those beds. But the problem there is that a lot of that land is programmed by the state for other things. And so only so much of that land can go so many ways. There's some adjacent Army Corps land that potentially can be utilized. And I'm stale on this conversation, but these were the things that we're talking last time I was engaged in that conversation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Vice President Schnepp. Any other comment, question? Great presentation, Rob. Really appreciate being with us tonight and look forward and really appreciate all the work that's being done in the town. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Any other questions for Town Manager else? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. And Vice President Schnepp, if you can help me with the minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move approval of the minutes from the Town Council meeting held on November 3rd, 2022.
Second.
First and a second, and do we have any discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Director Poian, please, for the roll call.
Thank you. Counselors Clark.
Yes.
Cullum. Cusack.
Yes.
Levesque.
Yes.
Mendy's.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Nep.
Yes.
Donacy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Cullum. You have 10 yes.
Thank you. And just to make a note that Counselor Cullum has stepped away for the time being. Thank you, Director Poian. And with that, it is now time for Council Communications, elected officials, boards, committees, staff, commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Who would like to go first? Counselor Atzalis, please.
All right, just a couple of updates. So tomorrow at noon at the Centerville Library, there'll be coffee with the L C P C. Again, 12 to 1 tomorrow, Centerville Library. I would like to know what kind of coffee they're having because that's important. Secondly, the Centerville Christmas Stroll is December 11th from 3:00 to 6:00, and there is not a Patriots game that day. This is a reminder, I mentioned this last meeting, but Park City Wind will be having informational sessions coming up Thursday, December 8th, 5:00 to 7:00 at Centerville Library. Thursday, January 12th, 5:00 to 7:00 at Centerville Library. Wednesday, February 8th, 7:00 to 9:00 via Zoom. And then Thursday, March 9th, 5:00 to 7:00 at Centerville Library. And that is all for me.
Thanks, Counselor Atzalis. Anybody else? Vice President Schnepp, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to remind my fellow counselors that tomorrow morning at 7:30 is going to be the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association Meeting. That's the monthly meeting. It's going to be in-person and on Zoom. In-person meeting is at the Riverway, well, at least the location is the Riverway Restaurant in Yarmouth. Breakfast will be served. The featured speaker is, I don't know exactly his position, but someone from the town of Vale, Vale, Colorado, to talk about sort of some of their innovative ways of dealing with their housing crisis. And I think that there's been a lot of interest from other elected officials in other towns about the kind of perceived booming of short-term rentals and obviously the crush of year-round housing. So I think it's a great topic. And again, if you can't make it in person, please look at the link that Cynthia sent out earlier in the week to join us for part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnepp. And any other announcements before I make a couple? Counselor Shaughnessy, please.
I just wanted everyone to know that you can come out and support your local football team in Thanksgiving's game on Wednesday, 11:23 from 12:00 to 2:00. They're going to have a rolling rally on Main Street Hyannis for the Barnstable Redhawks. So please come out and support our young people.
Thank you, Counselor Shaughnessy. Appreciate that. And that's a good time, by the way. And for all you counselors out there, usually they have a fire truck that you can jump on. I've had the privilege of being on that a couple of times. And I think it was Counselor Mendy's and I were last year and along with Principal Barnstable High School. And so it's a great time and really a good time to see the kids and, you know, celebrate and school spirit and all those types of things right before the Thanksgiving game. So go Barnstable, beat Falmouth. So that being said, there's also, right after Thanksgiving, there is a two-day special event. This is called the Gingerbread Lane at the Harbor Overlook, and it's artist market, puppet shows, cool games, hot drinks, and more. It's November 25th and 26th, Friday and Saturday after Thanksgiving from 11:00 A. M. to 3:00 P. M. And 51 Ocean Street, base of the Hyannis Village Green and all around the areas of Town Hall and Ocean Street. And it's a great event. I've been able to take in that before. And again, it's the Arts Barnstable, Melissa Shaw, Tran, and her team that kind of lead the charge on this, and we just appreciate them and look forward to seeing what's all is going to happen there. And again, we had the rolling rally, and again, so many great things happened this week with the great streets, momentum and the events that were taking place. So lots happening here in the town of Barnstable. And I don't have it off the top of my head, but maybe it would be a good idea, too. The, I believe it's December 3rd, is the Hyannis Christmas Stroll. I believe that starts at 11:00 and it ends at 5:00. And then there's the boat parade thereafter. And so lots happening there. Just want to stay ahead of the game there. And yeah, so again, and we will have a Town Council meeting prior to that so we can make those announcements again. But if not, any other Town Council announcements? Okay, not seeing any, I would say now in time would be to take a break. So let's take a five-minute break, come back, and we'll start the orders of the day. Thank you so much.
You're all set to go back on the record.
Okay, thank you very much. Council Starr, please, if you could, first item of Old Business, item number 2022-159, and open the public hearing, please.
Hey, let's see, I can do this.
Yes, you can.
This is Old Business number 2022-159. Amending the Code of the Town of Barnstable, Part 1, General Ordinances, Chapter 240, Zoning, Article 3, 24030E4, by amending the separation requirements of the Medical Marijuana Overlay District. This is a public hearing and requires a two-thirds full council roll call.
Second.
Thank you, Council Starr, and we have Director Planning Development, Elizabeth Jenkins with us. Begin the rationale, do some introduction possibly.
Thank you, President Levek, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. I'm going to share my screen and I will provide a brief introduction to the item. Is that okay? So, starting off, this is a proposed amendment to the Town of Barnstable zoning ordinance pertaining to the Medical Marijuana Overlay District. I will note that this is a reconsideration of this item that was originally voted on October 6th and remind the council that they voted to waive the provisions of Town Council Rule 6F to allow for reconsideration of this item and voted to re-advertise the public hearing to tonight's meeting. A brief overview of medical marijuana in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Town of Barnstable to start. In November of 2012, a citizen-initiated ballot, ballot question passed by a majority vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, legalizing the medical use of marijuana. This logic effect won January 2013. In May of 2013, implementing regulations from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health became effective, regulating the registration and distribution of medical marijuana. Since that time, fast forward to 2014, the Town of Barnstable adopted local regulations for medical marijuana within the Town of Barnstable, regulating the time, place, and manner in which the use could occur. After that, a considerable amount changed. Adult-use recreational marijuana was legalized in Massachusetts. And in 2017, the Cannabis Control Commission was established. And following the establishment of that, of the Cannabis Control Commission, the medical use of marijuana is now regulated by a section of the Code of Massachusetts Regulations and implemented by the Cannabis Control Commission. The item before the council tonight, again, is a citizen petition to change the provisions of the zoning as they pertain to medical marijuana in the Town of Barnstable. Medical marijuana is regulated through a zoning overlay district that is located, as you can see here. The Medical Marijuana Overlay District contains 23 parcels. It's in the general area of Addex Lane and Independence Drive. The underlying zoning in this area is primarily industrial. And the regulations, the text of the zoning ordinance that apply to this district is Section 24030. 24030 outlines, again, regulations pertaining to the medical marijuana use and various other, various other associated, associated land use issues such as parking, setbacks, signage, and so on. I will note that medical marijuana is a special permit use, requiring a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in this overlay district. And the citizens' petition that is before the council tonight addresses the separation requirement, separation from a medical marijuana facility, a medical marijuana dispensary to other uses. And that is the section of the zoning ordinance that is in question. Procedurally, again, the planning board did unanimously recommend support of the proposed amendment. And as noted, this is a reconsideration of the item. That concludes my overview, and I'll turn it over, back over to you, President Levek, and, and to the citizens, citizen petitioners for this item.
Thank you. Excellent, so, so this is a, a public hearing. And we have gotten the rationale, is there any additional rationale from, from the citizens' petitioners at all? Elizabeth, I didn't see anybody here, but just to, if you wanted to recognize anybody. Mr. McNamara is here. Would you like to just briefly, kind of, I know we, we've been here before, but just want to appreciate your time and being with us and give you an opportunity to speak if you'd like.
Sure, thanks, thanks again to the council. Yeah, so the, the petition, to back up, I suppose, was presented, you know, for all the reasons that were discussed. I mean, the, the matter is really, I guess, a matter of law at the heart of it. The law of Massachusetts does require municipalities to put in reasonable zoning for medical marijuana. And so this was aimed at fixing that. 200 or so signatures were collected in the span of 10, 10 to 12 days. And this was submitted in early May. And as Leonard Jenkins described, this, you know, went through the normal referral process from council to planning, which endorsed. And then we had the hearing initially in September. I did want to comment a little bit about, you know, some of the outreach that was done, in addition to the outreach that was done by the Planning Department. We did contact a number of area businesses, let them know, give them a preview on what was presented for the petition. A lot of them, you know, were engaging and, and did, you know, seem to support it. I, I reached out to the Union Zion Church on a number of occasions, starting in March. And, you know, let the pastor there know that, you know, we were anticipating doing this. I wanted to sit down with him and speak with him about, you know, any concerns he may have. It didn't seem to have any at the time. The hearing occurred in September, or was supposed to, and it, it seemed that, indicated he didn't understand or know that this was happening. I again, reached out and, you know, wanted to engage him in a conversation and let him know at that time that we had months ago scheduled the presentation at the Council on Aging in Barnstable. So that occurred, and it was well-attended. All, all, all participants, I would say, were probably, you know, over the age of 60. And we're just trying to learn more about this as an alternative medicine for some of the issues they were facing. The council itself, or, so this is the Barnstable, you know, the, it's, it's the old senior center. But they, you know, they invited us back because there was such enthusiasm. I'm happy to continue, you know, engaging anyone, including the pastor or congregation on this. I think that it's important that people do get, you know, some information if they, if they're not familiar with cannabis. We've been doing these presentations around southeastern Mass, we did it in Middleborough. Same story, you know, 50 attendance, the most widely attended event that they've held there. there, but didn't involve spaghetti. But, you know, there were a lot of interest, and, you know, they invited us back again. I, I do want to mention too, because this happened so recently, but last night I had the opportunity to go up to MGH and Harvard Medical School Research Center in Boston, where I spoke with a doctor who was a clinician, who was working with a lab director at the Musculoskeletal Lab at the MGH Research Center. The clinician was, you know, was a, was a renowned surgeon, and what he was finding is, obviously, he had a lot of older clients, patients. There were constantly, or there were a lot of them asking him about cannabis, especially as opposed to opioids, with respect to, you know, post-surgery treatment. And so he set out and approached the lab director, and they jointly began a study because ordinarily, you know, the surgeon would, would advise his patients, don't smoke cigarettes because the nicotine is known to inhibit bone growth. And he, he wanted to find out similarly whether cannabis had any effects. But what they found was that not only did cannabis not inhibit bone growth, but it actually is showing evidence of enhancing bone growth in a healing situation. And so he and the lab director have established a full program around this. And this is the kind of interesting science that's coming out about this plant that has previously been prohibited, and we've all learned, you know, in our, in our youth about, you know, all of the ills of, of drugs in general, and this has sort of been lumped in. But I, I just can't express enough how exciting it can be, not only, you know, for the treatment of patients, but for science in general, to allow, you know, to, to sort of promote this and, and let it be as an alternative, especially under the circumstances with the opioid crisis as it is. Again, I'll mention that Barnstable County is the oldest in Massachusetts, and so we do, you know, host some of the more vulnerable populations who do make use of this, as you heard in public comment earlier. There was an individual who was eighty-six and, you know, using this, and so I find that very common. But in any case, thanks again. I look forward to having many more of these conversations and, you know, just appreciate the opportunity for input again.
Thank you, Attorney McNamara. This is a public hearing. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
President Levesque, we do. Reverend Harris and his wife, Andrea Harris.
Good, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Kelton Harris, and this is my husband, Reverend Bernard Harris. And at the outset, I'd like to thank the council for allowing us this opportunity to speak before you this evening. You know, I think that it was communicated that we just needed to review this, but we were prepared to speak at the last meeting where this was voted upon, and unfortunately, we were told that the, that the request had been pulled. And so our people all, we said, okay, it must have been pulled. So that's the reason why we're back here this evening. And it's very important to me that we be clear on the rationale and the background for all of this. Thank you, Attorney McNamara, for those comments. I must say that, you know, my husband isn't aware of communications. I'm not sure how you communicated with him, be it by letter, by phone call, whatever. But I will say that we only just, well, several months ago, went back to the church after, due to COVID. We had been remote, and we don't have resources to have someone sitting in the church necessarily answering the phone between nine and five. We don't even have a paid secretary. And so if we missed a communication from you, it was not intentional. And because we would have definitely want to engage in you about this, to try to learn more and understand more where it's coming from, where you're coming from with respect to this. And so, you know, we are in the, the, the field of helping people who oftentimes are in recovery. We do not need another attractive nuisance next door to us. Our young people are bombarded with this stuff in all types of ways every day of the week. They're bombarded at school, they're bombarded at the mall, they're bombarded in their communities and their neighborhoods. We don't want the church to be another attractive nuisance for them, where they come by and, oh, there's the marijuana facility. And yes, it's a medical marijuana facility, and I do quote because I, you know, I had the, the occasion to read the minutes from June where the discussion, where it was included in the discussion that in, in Mashpee yet started with medical, but now it allows adult use sales. This is another concern of ours, that, yeah, we're saying it's for medical now, but what else will happen in this community? This community that includes people of color that are not making any of the three billion in profit that others are making from this industry. It also includes people who are low socioeconomic backgrounds, people who are disenfranchised, the homeless. Those people will be impacted. You know, we, we really do not support mind-altering, anything that alters the mind without appropriate monitoring and regulation. You know, you mentioned research going on at Mass General Hospital. Well, I'm sure if you spoke with those researchers there, or those private investigators, they would tell you that that research is heavily regulated, heavily monitored, and they're not making three billion dollars off of this research. This, to me, I'm, I'm having a cognitive dissonance with some of the rationale being reported for this and wanting to do what's good for the community. We don't see this as being what's good for the community. Another thing that had really concerned me and concerned my husband is that it, it's presented as though, oh, we're just moving five hundred feet, and that's really the only change. When you read the initial zoning, there are two other significant things that are being removed. Sufficient buffering between the facility and the church, the school, the daycare. There's not sufficient buffering between the church and where the hospice was, because it doesn't take Einstein to figure out that that's where you want to put this medical marijuana facility. There's not sufficient buffering there. All you got to do is walk up the path between the bushes, and you're right there. The other piece is that there not be any adverse impact. We have people who are in recovery that come into our doors for various different reasons at various times of the day and various days of the week. There can be adverse impact. And now I'm not going to, you know, get into and try to say that I know everything about the effects or the impact of marijuana. But one thing I do know is that when you ask many people who are in recovery, many people who have become addicted to stronger substances, what was their first introduction? And it was marijuana. There was a comment made that, you know, you don't want Hyannis to, to be, or Bostock would be less competitive than other towns. Well, we don't want it to be competitive at the expense of its residents. And so if being competitive means exposing some communities to attractive nuisances that will just be reminding them that don't have sufficient anything between them, that don't have sufficient buffering for the people coming out, who may not all have good intentions with getting medical marijuana, let's, let's be honest about that as well. Everyone who seeks to get medical marijuana does not have pure intentions. It's not just the sixty-year-olds at the senior centers. We don't want to expose our parishioners. We don't want to expose the children. We don't want to expose anyone to any undue and unnecessary harm. And it is contrary to what we believe and what we're fighting against. You know, earlier in this meeting, there was a comment made, you know, congratulating the work that's being done with the Substance Abuse Program at the school or whatever. I just found that to be such, that's just so ironic, that we're here having this conversation and at the same time, celebrating a substance abuse program. Let's celebrate not putting the substance in places where people can get it. And if you're going to change the zoning, then why not change it for everywhere in, in Barnstable? Why only this little area? Why is it that there was a comment made, oh, we can just decrease it to five hundred for the churches, but leave that a thousand for the schools? That'll keep us in compliance, at the expense of the church? Now perhaps that, perhaps that's not what you meant. I could have it totally wrong. I don't think I do, but I, I could have it totally wrong. But I don't think that, that statement represents the interests of the church community, the faith community, and the parishioners at Zion who pay taxes, who pay water bills, who do everything every other person does. We deserve, they deserve the same amount of protection and coverage as any other community in Barnstable. And so, you know, Ms. Attorney McNamara, if you want to talk more about this, I'm more than happy, we are more than happy to set up some time with you. But at this point in time, based on what was said, what's been, what I've read, what we've read, this seems to be a money-making situation. This isn't about keeping Barnstable ahead of the curve and all of that. This is about that three-billion-dollar off-Cape industry. And I don't know who are the citizens, I, you know, do you, are you the citizen or are you the developer? And who are we talking about? There are just so many holes in this, but if nothing else, we are not willing to say, yes, we support this, yes, we will go along with this at the expense of our parishioners and others in communities, underserved communities, underrepresented communities, low socioeconomic communities. Because when bad things happen, then they're touted out on the front page of Cape Cod Times. Let's try to do some things to avoid it.
Ms. Harris, I'm, I'm sorry, I've let you really, we normally have a three-minute, and I just wanted to give you every opportunity to talk, but I just, maybe you could, you have some final thoughts, if you had any.
Just, just anything else?
No, because you, you've nailed it all in regards to what we need to resolve, and that's the key, resolve, because it was like we were hoodwinked and really didn't give an opportunity to speak on this whole matter. And it was such an opportune time during the COVID period that we were avoided from this, and even at the last meeting, we were told not to stay because it's over. It's already been decided, and so it seemed like it was just a slap in the face. And then, and I look back at La Guise Foundation, but it's so much, it's so much, so much to talk about that, I don't want to bring that up, but. My, we, my wife has said everything that we wanted to say.
Okay. Just to, to clarify a little bit, something for you, it was, that was an error on, on our part, that you were told that because there was some confusion with the, the previous Zion Church building, and that was up for discussion in regards, was that never explained to you?
Yes, we heard there was another agenda item that was based on the museum.
Correct. And that was being withdrawn, right? That's where that confusion came from, just so you know, and just so the public knows as well, that, that it was an honest mistake, and they were trying to actually, intention was to save you time because you were coming to speak for that item, and, and again, it was kind of the perfect storm. No excuse, and that is why we are here again tonight, and.
Right, but, you know, I must say to that, we were clear with the person what we were there about, and I don't think the museum's position was related to medical marijuana.
No, it wasn't.
But that's all here, yeah, you know, we can't go back and change.
It was definitely not done on purpose.
Wanting to, to have, you know, have the public understand fully. But we appreciate this opportunity to revisit. Attorney McNamara, I'm sure this wasn't good news for you to hear, we had to revisit that, you had to revisit this. And so I appreciate your coming and speaking and sharing your perspective, and we appreciate this opportunity to speak before the council as well. So we hope that, and we are trusting in faith that this is a real opportunity to speak and not just a way to say, we gave you your shot and here we go, aye, aye, aye. So we're believing that in faith, and so thank you again. Not sure what happens next, but we're more than happy to just step off if that's what we need to do.
We really appreciate you being here at this point in time, but yes, we're going to move on to, to more council discussion and, and then look to maybe amend and then move forward with a vote, but we do appreciate you being with us at this point in time. So if you'd like to continue to watch, and you were, you were without a doubt heard, and when, you know, I, I believe I have talked to Pastor Harris myself and took it upon myself as the president of the town council to make sure that you were notified of what was happening here, and then it became clear, and, and here we are. So it is crystal clear, your view, and we appreciate your time, and again, apologize for the inconvenience of what happened last time.
It happens.
And, and, you know, invite you to watch furthermore, either online or on Channel 18, so very much appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Is there anybody here, else here for public comment, Sarah?
No, that is all.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would close the public hearing at this point in time, and is there any council discussion? Counsel Cullen, please.
Yes, thank you. Can we go over how, how the Zion Church was informed of these changes? Was it sent via registered mail, like it usually is for abutters when these things come up for discussion? Like, what was the outreach to the church, and why did they not, why are they saying they did not receive notice?
Sure. So, you know, the, the law states that we're actually, by statute, we're not actually required to notify abutters in regards to something like this. I had requested that, and asked if the, if through Planning Department, if we could reach out to the, the abutters and those who are directly affected by what we were changing in the zoning, which would be churches and gathering places for children, houses of worship and gathering places for children. So in that respect, you again, kind of, you know, there wasn't any registered mail per se, I believe it was, it was done through email, the original contact. I, at the time, was wondering if, you know, the churches actually, if we got any response, and, and, and worrying and being concerned about the fact that there was no response, me thinking, okay, with this, that there was nothing, I, you know, basically was asking and entertaining the idea that we would then, you know, continue the item, and that's, and that's what happened. So we moved that forward, and, and that's what, we continued that from there. And at that point in time, the Planning Department took a more robust outreach and actually went door-to-door with flyers and personally delivered them to people to notify them, and that's why we had that second hearing. And then, again, what happened, and we've just discussed it, and again, kind of a synopsis of order of events, we had this Zion Church Museum item on there with CPC and general fund monies that we were going to approve, or at least discuss to approve in regards to improvements there, and that was going to be tabled for further review, to review the lease agreement. And because that was being pulled off, you know, and our Communications Department does a great job communicating with people and not really wanting to waste their time, and we opened it up, obviously, for people not only to speak during the actual public hearing, but public comment. So there was our person that was in charge of, of bringing in people into the, the waiting room, asked what they were there for. They, again, mentioned that they were there for the Zion. It was misinterpreted, I know, and I believe that they did the best job that they could, Mrs. Harris and Reverend Harris, to make it clear that what they were there for, for whatever reason, it wasn't understood that way, and they were invited, hey, you know what, you don't have to be here, that item's going to be withdrawn, again. Again, done with good intent and innocence of trying to save them time. And because of that, they withdrew. We went forward. They didn't get a chance to speak to remedy that. We reconsidered the item, and here we are tonight. So that is.
Follow up.
Please, of course.
Seeing that the first time that they heard of it was when the planning board ran with the ball and went around from door to door with flyers.
Planning Department. I believe it was.
Department, I'm sorry, yeah. When the planning department went around with flyers door to door, talking about what what the potential would be.
So just so you know, in full disclosure and transparency, I actually made a phone call to Reverend Harris the day of the initial event, and it was um, what he mentioned was it was the first time they had heard of it. So and so he did not receive or respond to the email that was sent to the church.
And if I can just address one other thing that that I think that we could, we can allay some fears with, um, if we just have the conversation publicly now. In order for them to change from a medicinal marijuana facility to uh just a wholesale facility or whatever, a retail facility, rather, for for all public use or adult use, it would have to go again for more permitting through the town. Is that correct? They just can't switch that switch on.
We would have to rezone the entire area.
Okay, so that I think that allays a lot of fears. If this is one of those things for me where, you know, there 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 is a need for it in our in our town, there is a need for it. And I think the area that we chose for medicinal marijuana, we chose because it was not in a marginalized neighborhood. Um, that is one of the that was one of the reasons behind it. It's one of the reasons that we all came together on that particular spot. Um, albeit the spot was too small to host any business. And that's why we're here today. Um, so, you know, I think that the the town has really weighed in on not putting a facility like this in a neighborhood, especially a marginalized one. Um, and and honestly, marijuana is legal. And and that's just the way it is. And we need to, we we needed to zone for it when we zoned for it so that it wouldn't end up in a marginalized neighborhood. And we did. We took care of that, which I think was responsible. I was on the council at that time. It was a big meeting of the minds. You know, we had Jimmy Crocker on one side and me on it. It was a big deal. When we all weighed that out, Ann Kennedy, all of us. Um, and we sorted it out so that we would not, we would deliberately not um hurt a neighborhood that was suffering already. So um, I feel like we've done our due diligence with that. Um, and now that marijuana is legal, and I mean, my son at twelve years old was dealing with kids smoking on the bus. Eight years old, same thing. I mean, it 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 is a reality in our lives. And and people in recovery face it every single day. Um, and and that's just the reality of it. So I think, you know, I I appreciate the town's effort on this. I'm very sorry that 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 confusion happened that that's really, really too bad, because it would have been nice to have been been succinct with our um, all of our legislating. But um, I do believe the town has done its due diligence. And um, so, thank you.
Thank you.
The planning department, too. I appreciate all of the efforts you do to make make things go right.
Thank you for the history lesson, too, Council Column, because you were a part of that initial discussion. So um, I think it's important to have that reference point. Thank you for that. And and just to further um go forward again with that with that zoning piece, um, at at this point in time, that would not be possible for any medical facility at this point in time. It would have to take um, again, a a change in that metal that is a medical only use zone. So just want to clarify that. And of course, at any point in time, Director Jenkins, uh, if I am misspeaking in my talk uh or often inaccurate or anything that I'm saying, please feel free to uh correct me. So any other further comment or discussion in regards to this? Uh, Counselor Neary, please.
Thank you, President Lebec, and and thank you for the comments from everyone involved. Um, ultimately, this is just a zoning. This is a zoning uh vote, zoning change issue. With all due respect, um, Mr. McNamara's um representation, I I am uh uh I guess maybe a a little tentative on the effect that he knows the feeling obviously has come out with the Zion the Zion Church. And I'm curious uh why there hasn't been, let's just say, a meeting of the minds uh to kind of smooth this whole thing over. And and I don't know that it's really appropriate venue to discuss what went back and forth, but but it seems as though that there has, maybe I maybe I'm mistaken, but it doesn't seem like there has been a a give and take on on uh between those two parties being abutters. That would be my only comment. But again, ultimately, it's a zoning issue. Uh, we're trying to standardize the zoning in the town. The zoning is all over the place. And um, uh, I think that really is the crux of the issue. But but I I would always, you know, like to defer to say that the the parties that are involved have a have a conversation in ensues. I guess that's just my comment on that. Uh, Counselor Stein, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just thought it was worthwhile just again to kind of underscore, you know, this is a zoning issue we're talking about and to just highlight the history again. Counselor Cullen, you know, brought it up as well. This is something we took up probably, I don't want to say it was eight years ago now. And we were required by the state to come up with a medical zone in town. And we were required to do that. So we came up with that area, and now we're in a situation where the state guidelines don't match up with the way our zoning is written in that required required zone, which, you know, puts us in some, you know, legal possible legal jeopardy. And on the adult use, um, that was probably four years ago, we were required to take that up. And we either had to pick a zone or allow it to be anywhere in town, basically, was the gist of it. And that was probably a that was a pretty lengthy debate we had as well, but there's a zone for that. You know, really more of a by the Cape Cod Hospital. And within that zone, use is unlimited. There isn't any retail that's currently allowed. Um, it's all closed door, um, adult use, not open to the public. And there's no businesses proposed over there currently. But again, just want to kind of underscore the history, you know, what we're required to do, you know, by through the state and how we've handled it, you know, for the past, you know, eight, nine years now to get us to this point.
And again, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Director Jenkins, um, of course, Attorney McNamara as well. I'm sure you understand the process better than anybody, that uh there's still a special permit process that needs to take place, correct?
That's correct. The use is permitted as a conditional use or a special permit use requiring review and approval by the zoning board of appeals.
And in that review, there could be some um let, you know, some things in there in regards to shading or, you know, um, you know, different requirements put in place so that that I guess, and again, I I'm trying to um address Ms. Harris's concerns in regards to um separation. Thank you, Counsel Q. Glad you're here. And uh, so uh, am I right in saying that? And I'm not saying that they will do that. I'm just saying that's a possibility.
That's correct. I'm not sure that's particularly enumerated in the ordinance, but the opportunity for special permit review is to be able to review proposals on a site by site basis and condition proposals based on the particular situation.
So in that, that was a public hearing and the and anybody who would be worried and concerned about that could go to the zoning board of appeals hearing and be able to have their voice heard at that point in time, correct?
That's correct. Zoning Board of Appeals special permit hearings are noticed in accordance with Mass General Law Forty A that does require uh notice to abutters within three hundred.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you for that clarification. Any other counselor questions, comments? Okay, not seeing any. Uh, we'll move to a vote, please, the next uh.
Um, Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to entertain any amendment at this point in time. Thank you. Sorry about that. Turn it over.
That's that's okay. Can I um just give it to second intro to?
Yes, please. Please do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Karen Ober, Town Attorney. Good evening, counselors. Um, basically, we'd like to reintroduce the same two amendments that we discussed in October at the October, I think, the October sixth meeting. Um, the first amendment, and I think Sarah's going to put it up on the screen, is not a substantive amendment. It's cleanup. It changes all of the references from the Department of Public Health, um, all of the references in in the ordinance from the Department of Public Health and the Department of Public Health Regulations to the Cannabis Control Commission, which is now the state entity that has oversight over all of the marijuana um issues for the state. And so it's just cleanup, making those changes from the old references to the new references of the Cannabis Control Commission and their regulatory sites. Um, but there are no substantive changes. So that's what this amendment does. So if if there's a counselor who would like to make that motion.
They'll move. Second.
First and a second. Is there any discussion on this amendment?
Just a point of information. So when we voted this two weeks or whatever it was a month ago now, we didn't we make that amendment?
But now.
You made that amendment, but when you took the vote to reconsider the item. Oh, I see. It was the original item. Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're starting you're starting fresh.
Okay, not seeing any more discussion. Um, Director Poyant, please, for the roll call on this amendment, please.
Thank you, counselors. Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Lebec.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
That gives you eleven yes.
Thank you, Director Poyant. And back to Attorney Nova, please, for um another item.
Thank you, President Levec. So there's a second amendment, um, which, again, we're putting up on the screen. This amendment would amend the petition language to apply the five hundred foot buffer to include religious institutions so that all of the locations are treated in the same manner, so that there's a five hundred foot buffer for all of them. And it also makes the measurement of that distance consistent with how the Cannabis Control Commission measures the buffer distance for schools. So it just makes everything uniform, basically.
So moved. Second.
First and a second. Any discussion, please, in regards to this amendment? Not seeing any. Let's move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yep.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you, Director Poyant. Okay, so now we have an item before us that has been amended. Uh, is there any more discussion in regards to this item as amended? Okay, not seeing any further discussion. Uh, move to a vote, please, as amended. This item, twenty twenty-two dash one five nine, as amended.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yeah.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Thank you. That's twelve uh eleven yes.
Thank you, Director Poyant. Thank you again for being with us, uh, Attorney McNamara. And um and thank you again, Elizabeth Jenkins, for you uh and your staff's participation in regards to this item. Thank you.
Thanks again to the council, and I do intend to um speak with Pastor Harris again. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item of business, uh, Council Column, if you could, please. Item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four seven.
Yes, um, this is item twenty twenty-three dash zero four seven, appointments to a board committee or commission. The Disability Commission, Christopher Bartley, as a regular member to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty-four. Housing Committee is Evan Gaudette, as a regular member to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty-four. Youth Commission, Madeline Boyle, as a student member to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty-three. Eric Arabagiev, did I do it again? As a student member to a term expiring six thirty twenty twenty-three. This may be acted upon with a roll call majority vote.
Yeah. First and a second. Thank you. Any council discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Let's move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Mendes.
Yes.
Neary. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Stein Hilber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
You're muted, Counsel Clark. Still muted.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Neary.
Ah, yes.
Thank you. Eleven yes.
Meds are kicking in.
You're muted, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to the next item of new business. Um, while I have your attention, Counsel Stein Hilber, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is item uh twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, like open hearing. Supplemental appropriation order for the Barnstable Police Department fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating expense budget in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. The purpose of funding the cost associated with the hiring of eight patrol officers to fill current vacancies as written.
Second.
Yeah, a first and a second, and we have Chief Matthew Sonnabend here to help us with the rationale, please. Oop, you're muted, sir.
And I was on a roll. Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the council, Chief Sonnabend here to speak about item number twenty twenty-three dash zero four eight, uh, which is the Barnstable Police Department seeking a supplemental appropriation to our twenty twenty-three budget in the amount of one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars to allow the department to fill eight current police officer positions. As you can see in the item before you, the expenditure is split into two different categories. One, with a category of one hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and twenty to cover the cost of seven officers that are going to be sent to a recruit academy. There are currently two recruit academies that are in um getting scheduled to run, one in January on Cape Cod and one in February in Plymouth. We're targeting one of those two academies, however the timeline actually plays out. Um, the other budget item in there, the other breakdown is in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars for one officer out of the eight, which has already been to the academy and doesn't need the academy expenditures. So that's the difference and the reason of the breakdown there. But the total is one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. And as you can see, a supplemental appropriation comprises several parts, pre-employment requirements, including medical exams, psychological assessments, academy tuition, ammunition, equipment, radio, firearm, and uniform. The items listed above will need to be funded in the twenty twenty-three year um in order to complete the hiring components as required by both the uh academy and the Municipal Police Training Committee and to get these people on board. At the time, our twenty twenty-three budget. At the time, our 2023 budget was put together. We did not know how many vacancies we would have or when they would have. So that's why I'm before you for a supplemental appropriation, as our budget did not contain any hiring components at the time it was drawn. The fiscal impact is the funding for this appropriation will be provided from the general fund reserves that are allocated to the municipal savings account, which has a current balance of $8,272,011. This is a one-time cost, and the appropriation will not be added to the department's base budget for the fiscal year 2024 budget planning purposes. I am available to take any questions.
Before we move forward with the council discussion, there's a public hearing open. Do we have anybody for public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Council Clark, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you very much, President Levek. And thank you very much, Chief Sonnibend. In regards to the hiring of the current vacancies, is there, were there savings from the from the vacancies that can be applied to this? That it, this, this request for supplemental expenditures?
I believe not, because they would be drawing from two different line items. One is a salary and one is something different. They'd have to reallocate from salary, and then once you're filling the positions, the salaries would be getting drawn.
And with all due respect, can, is, is there a transfer that can come from transfer from salaries to salaries?
From salaries, salaries to salaries? We would have to transfer it from salaries to capital items or operating expenses.
Council Clark, just to clarify, this, it wasn't budgeted. That's why they're here, that's why they're here with us for a supplemental. If it was budgeted, they wouldn't have to be here for a supplemental.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that, President Levek. It's just that, given vacancies, it seems to me like there would be leftover money.
I, I think because, again, because it wasn't budgeted, there was a hiring freeze, I believe, at one point in time. Was there not? I would tell me, you might be able to explain it better than me. Maybe. I don't want to put you on the spot either.
Well, I defer to the Chief of Director Milne, because I don't want to state it incorrectly, but it is my understanding, given the demands on our police department, that in the absence of police officers, we are having our own workforce work more hours, therefore paying additional dollars in overtime to have that staff available. So there is no savings, and in fact, the chief is challenged annually with vacancies to try to balance that overtime, which is time and a half, versus a straight salary. So it's far more cost-effective for the chief to have all of his positions filled. We do not anticipate salary savings.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom Majeals.
Thank you.
First, just, just to do it in order, I know Council Shaughnessy had her hand up earlier.
Thank you, President Levek. Good evening, Chief. I know we've been running short on the force for quite some time now. So I think it's fabulous that we're bringing in eight new officers. Where are you at in terms of shortfalls? In other words, how many officers ideally do we need to bring in? I know it's been an issue for a while.
Current, we're authorized 118 officers. Currently, right now, as of today, we are down 12. So this eight will leave us with four, but I'm anticipating three more retirements by February, so that will leave me right back up to eight total by February.
But I feel like we're in better shape.
We are, we are getting there. We just had a class that graduated. They are just finishing up their field training, so they'll have three officers that'll be getting released from their field training right around Thanksgiving, and they'll be out there on their own. There's five officers there. We have three officers following them up in about a month. So that we have eight new officers out on the street that had recently graduated this summer. They've all completed their field training. And then this class will go in probably January, February, so they'll be graduating right around July-ish in the summertime, going through their field training, and then they'll be out on the road about this time.
Throwing them into the fire.
Yeah, it takes, it takes about a year from beginning to end to get everyone up and running. But this is gonna help. It's gonna help.
It's, that's good news. And I also wanted to say, I neglected to say at the last meeting, I think it was so fabulous that you guys had those free pound classes for the local kids at the police station. I just think that's just such great outreach. So thanks, thanks for doing that and hosting that.
It was great. It was actually a byproduct of another one of our outreach programs, Kids Day. We met the lady who was teaching the classes there at Kids Day. I just germinated and took off, so.
I think that was great. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Shaughnessy. Vice President Schnep, and then Council Mendez, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, but Council Shaughnessy asked my question, so, and Chief gave a great answer, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schnep. Council Mendez, please. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you, President Levek, but Council Shaughnessy asked my question, so thank you.
Okay, no problem. Nice job, Council Shaughnessy. You know? Good stuff. Anybody else questions for Chief Sonnibend? Chief, just, just the fact that we have this before us, I think is just a great sign of, of for Barnstable and honestly, the Barnstable Police Department, that there is the opportunity. I know we would be the envy of many police departments throughout the state and throughout the country that we would have this opportunity to be able to do this supplement, plentiful, I'm sorry, supplemental appropriation for these new hires. And it's also very encouraging that there's a transfer here from somebody coming from the police department. I know, I don't know if you went off the top of your head, but I gotta believe this, this close to a half a dozen, at least in the last calendar year that I've seen, either through swearing in and different activities that have taken place. So that is also a positive sign as well. And in the culture that you've created there, Chief Sonnibend, so kudos to you and to your staff and to the police, police officers here in Barnstable. So just want to say thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. We do have a couple more that are interested in coming, and I want to say that, you know, certainly we have a great place to work here at the police department, but it's really a community effort. Everyone here in Barnstable has done their part to make Barnstable somewhere people want to live. They want to live, and they want to work, and they want to raise their families. So, you know, thanks to everyone else for doing their part as well.
Excellent. Thank you. And I just want to make a note that I am closing the public hearing, because I don't think I officially did that. So I am closing the public hearing on public comment. In regards to that, any further discussion? Not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors. Neri.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhilde.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
That's 11 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Sonnibend.
Okay.
You as well. Next item of business, Council Starr, please, 2023-049. You're muted, sir. You're still muted, sir.
I'm getting there.
There you go. Loud and clear.
This is number 2022-049. Appropriation order in the amount of $150,000 in community preservation funds for the purpose of acquiring a conservation restriction on 2.3 acres of open space located at 242 Commerce Road, Barnstable, Mass. Shown as a portion on Assessors Map 318, Parcel 025/001. This is a public hearing with a roll call majority of the full council.
Second.
Hey, great. We have a first and a second, and we have Lindsay Council, our Chair for Community Preservation Committee. And we also want to welcome Director of the Barnstable Land Trust, General Milkman. Welcome here, and Lindsay, take it away.
Thank you, Council President Levek. The Barnstable Land Trust is seeking approval from the Town Council through the Town Manager for community preservation, open space, and recreation funds in the amount of $150,000 for the acquisition of a conservation restriction on 2.3 acres of open space located at 242 Commerce Road, Barnstable. The Community Preservation Committee, meeting on May 17, 2021, members voted, members present voted unanimously to support and recommend the application for appropriation. However, the project was put on hold until a conservation restriction, a CR, was so not provided to the council for a vote at that time. The draft CR is now under review for approval by the Massachusetts Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs. However, that approval has been much delayed, along with many others, as the Commonwealth attempts to replace its main CR reviewer, who has departed the position. This request is that the project be considered by the Town Council for approval of the funding request, then later returned with the approved CR in substantially the form attached here too, so as not to delay the ultimate closing date. This community preservation application for open space funds is part of a conservation project named the Bowles Field Historic Landscape Project, in which the Barnstable Land Trust will purchase the property, and the town of Barnstable would hold the conservation restriction. The complete project includes preservation of an additional 2.8 acres owned by the same family, who will donate a conservation restriction on those acres to the Barnstable Land Trust. This funding represents a portion of the total project cost of $581,200, with $256,200 to be provided by the Barnstable Land Trust, $175,000 from the Massachusetts Conservation Partnership Grant to be awarded in the fall of 2022, and the balance of $150,000 funded with this authorization. The conservation of this project will complete a 37.44-acre area extending to Barnstable Harbor, connecting with conservation lands owned by the Mass Audubon Society and protect a major contiguous wildlife corridor and view to Barnstable Harbor from Commerce Road forever. Public access is planned by a short walking trail to the field and its seating area. The Barnstable Land Trust is allowing ample time for public and private fundraising with the intention to close by January 2023. The project is also dependent on the owner receiving a subdivision approval from the Cape Cod Commission and the town, as this parcel was part of a prior commission determination of regional impact for the subdivision of the larger acreage. And I believe we have Janet with a presentation.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, President Levek and members of the council. Sarah, if we could show just a few slides. I think the presentation was very comprehensive, but I just wanted to show you visually what we're talking about here. This is a field with, on Commerce Road. And on both sides, this has been owned by the Brazelton family, the Lowell family before that for centuries, really. It used to be a farm, but it's been open the whole time, and with this project will remain open. It's on a very much-loved walking trail that goes around the village of Barnstable, starting at 6A, going up Millway, and then around Commerce Road. And if we can go to the next slide, this will show you the location of the three parcels, so there, there really is one parcel as the topic this evening, which is the one furthest to the south. That's the one that we're purchasing, and the town would hold the CR on. The two just north of it are the ones that the family will donate a conservation restriction on, and you can see that it's between Barnstable Harbor and the Marispin Creek. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see, so this is a, this is a project that Barnstable Land Trust has been working on with the family for decades now, since the 90s. They've donated land, they've donated conservation restrictions over the years so that these final pieces would sort of complete the corridor extending from Commerce Road all the way back to Barnstable Harbor. And I'll show you one more slide that, that sort of zooms us out a little bit. This slide is the the Cape Cod Commission, the plan for the Cape Cod Commission, it actually was approved already, so the subdivision was approved. And if we go to the next slide, zooming out a little bit, you can see just how important this is ecologically. It's fully within the hurricane inundation zone and provides not only a beautiful scenic corridor, but a wildlife and habitat corridor extending between the two ecosystems of the harbor and the marsh. And if we go just one more, you'll see the colored parcels are conservation land, some held by BLT, some held by Mass Audubon. And, and so the pieces in the middle are the ones that really complete this, this area of conservation, protecting it from development and maintaining the beautiful historic scenic view and the habitat as well. I think the the rationale that Lindsay read was pretty comprehensive. The, the funding is, campaign is complete as well. So Barnstable Land Trust has completed the private fundraising. So the CPA funding of $150,000 has leveraged both the big state grant and considerable private donor funding to make this all doable, hopefully in the early part of next year. And as Lindsay said, we would be coming back to you with the CR having been reviewed by the state already, and also to look at the two CRs on the other two parcels. Hopefully, at the same time, same evening, we can do it all at once. So I think I'll leave it at that unless you have questions.
Okay, no. At this point in time, because it is a public hearing, before we do council discussion, is anybody here for public comment, please?
There's no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public hearing and open it up for council discussion. Any council comments, questions? Beautiful piece of property. Love the long-term plan, and love that that's, for you, it's, it's, and for everybody at BLT, that it's coming to fruition. So I would be in support of it to, to kind of help complete that, what's happening there, so.
Thank you.
Council Starr.
Thank, thank you, President Levek. No, thank you, thank you for the presentation. This is just such an iconic piece of vista, you know, where you can see right over the field, all the way to the lighthouse in Sandy Neck. So keeping it open, the families worked hard to help that happen. They want it to happen, and BLT's worked hard to make it, put it all together. So I think it's a wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Starr. Any other comment? Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. It, it seems like this is a very small amount of money to leverage an incredible opportunity. So thank you for bringing this to our attention, and I will be in support of it.
Thank you, Vice President Schnep. Any other council comment, questions? Okay. Not seeing any. I'll move to a vote, please. Director Poyant, can you help me out with that?
Counselors. Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhilde.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levek.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neri.
Yes.
11 yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad, Lindsay, you didn't have to be here till midnight, because most of the time you're, you're the last one on this list there, so.
Oh, you guys aren't too bad. It's worth the wait.
Excellent. Well, thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Director, I should say, yeah, Director Milman, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next item of business. Council Cullen, please, if you could, item number 2023-050, open the public hearing.
Sure. This is item 2023-050, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2023, residential exemptions. It's a public hearing with a roll call, majority, full council vote.
Second, thank you so much. And we have Director, Finance Director Mark Mellon here with us to give us a brief rationale. We went in-depth the last meeting, so, but I didn't want to give an opportunity to go over the item once again, so Director Mil, please.
Thank you, President Levesque, and good evening, everyone. Mark Mill, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. This tax levy shifting option available to the town council allows for us to shift a portion of the residential tax levy between residential taxpayers. It does not impact the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax class pay taxpayers. The benefit of such a tax shifting option is the greatest to properties, assessed property values at the lowest levels. That benefit diminishes gradually as the assessed property value increases for those qualified properties, till you get to the point of about 1.68 million, and a taxpayer at that value pays the same amount of tax with a 20% residential exemption, and is, if there was no residential exemption in place. Again, this is a, this is an optional tax shifting tool available to all Massachusetts communities. The town council has had such an exemption in place since 2006, and so we bring it forward to you every year for your reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mill. And this is a public hearing, do we have any public comment?
One moment, please, someone just came in and we're not sure what item they're here for.
Okay.
Sorry about that, there's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. And I will close the public hearing, any council discussion? Okay, not seeing any? If, if the councils could turn their cameras on, or at least their microphones on, let's take a vote, please.
Point of information, could we get a clarification on what a yes vote means? I think it's always important to point that out on these.
Sure, Director Mill, could you clarify that for us, please?
A yes vote will continue with a 20% residential exemption.
Thank you, Director Mill. Thank you, Council Cullen, for the clarification, and continue to move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Shaughnessy? Starr?
Yes.
Steinhelber?
Yes.
Atzalis?
You're muted, sir.
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Poyant. Moving on to the next item of old business, Council Shaughnessy, please, if you could, item number 2023-051.
Thank you, President Levesque. This is item number 2023-051, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2023, tax factor. This is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority of the full council.
Second.
First and a second, and back to Finance Director Mark Mill for a brief rationale, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mark Mill, Director of Finance. This tax levy shifting option is required to be voted every year by every community in Massachusetts. It is an option that allows a community to shift a portion of the residential tax levy to the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax levies. Seeing how Barnstable's property tax is made up of about nine, almost 90% of residential taxpayers, any shift to the commercial, industrial, and residential, personal property class would provide a minimal savings to the residential class, and would have a significant impact on the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax classes. Thank you. And a yes vote would mean we would have a residential factor of one, which would be the same tax rate for all classes.
Thank you, Director Mill. And this is a public hearing, do we have anybody here for public comment?
There's no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing, any council discussion? You're not seeing any, let's move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Starr?
Yes.
Steinhelber?
Yes.
Atzalis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Director Poyant. And thank you, Director Mill, once again, for this, the annual education, really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Moving on to our next item of old business, Council Neary, please, if you could, item number 2023-052.
My pleasure, Mr. President, this is old business, requiring a public hearing, it's a roll call, two-thirds, majority, full council vote, two-thirds, full council vote. It's item number 2023-052, it's appropriation and loan order, and the amount of $2,850,000 for the purpose of funding design and permitting of the water pollution control facility headworks improvement project as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and we have Assistant DPW Director Rob Steen with us, the rationale, please.
Council President, I am joined tonight by Andy Belay, the Division Supervisor for the Water Push Control Division. As noted, these monies will be used to fund the design and permitting of the Water Push Control Facility Headworks Improvement Project. The purpose of this project is to construct improvements to the headwork station at the Water Push Control Facility. The improvements will address the condition, capacity, and performance of the headworks building while making necessary upgrades to support the construction of the future nitrogen removal improvements, as we discussed earlier this evening. Rehabilitation of the headworks facility was identified in the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Construction is proposed to be combined with the nitrogen removal improvements project to begin in fiscal year 2025 and be completed in fiscal year 2027, for the reasons, again, that we discussed earlier. The headworks building at the Water Push Control Facility is the beginning of the wastewater treatment process. Wastewater is screened, grit and debris are removed, and the flow is metered at this location. The headwork station includes an odor control system, including the odor control scrubbers and chemical delivery systems. The headworks, the existing headworks building was originally constructed in 1973, and the building has been expanded and upgraded once since it was put into service. In recent years, the building has shown advanced signs of degradation, requiring emergency repair, including leaking channel walls, grit system failures, failing concrete, and a failing odor control system. The odor control unit is housed in a location with inadequate access to carry out routine maintenance. As previously noted, the town recently completed an evaluation of nitrogen removal technologies, and the selected alternative requires the improvement of the screening process in order to function properly. This project aims to design improvements to the Water Push Control Facility Headworks Building that will exceed, that will extend the useful life of this process by approximately 30 years. The project, coupled with the nitrogen removal improvements upgrade, will result in a substantially higher quality treated effluent being discharged from the Water Push Control Facility. For the fiscal impact, funding for this project will be provided from a bond issue in future years. Operating budgets will include the annual debt service cost, annual loan payment is estimated to be $174,000 over a 20-year period. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Director Rob Steen, this is a public hearing, is there any public comment?
There's no public comment on this item.
Thank you, I'll close the public hearing, any council discussion? Vice President Schnep, please.
Thank you, Ms. President, thank you, Rob, for the presentation. Where exactly is the funding coming from? Is it coming from an enterprise account? Is it coming, I know we have a lot of different buckets, and so I'm just wondering what this particular project is being funded by.
So I'll pass that question on to Director Mill, who's much better qualified to speak to money.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Schnep and Director Steen. The funding, the repayment of this bond issue is anticipated to be provided from the special revenue fund that we have set up, whereby our local meals tax and rooms tax goes into. So this is part of that sewer construction, private way, special revenue fund that we have, and that's the funding source to repay the bond.
So just to follow up, when would an expense be allocated to, you know, the enterprise account funding versus, you know, is this considered because it's a new project or new expense that it would be tapped into that other fund?
This, yeah, since this project is associated with our, the, the build-out of our comprehensive wastewater management plan, we use that fund. When the project specifically associated with our existing sewer infrastructure, then that is part of the sewer enterprise fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for further clarification, in the rationale and the agenda that I have, it says financial impact, it says that funding was going to be coming from a bond issue.
That's correct. We will, we will initially pay for the cost of the project with the bond issue, but then we have to pay that bond back.
Right, and then that's where, right, excellent, just, again, just wanted to make sure that the public understood that, in case somebody out there reads the rationale and said, aha, you know, so, thank you, appreciate the clarification. Any other council discussion questions? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Steinhelber?
Yes.
Atzalis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us. And now we are in our new business, first item of new business, Council Shaughnessy, if you could, please, item number 2023-057.
It looks like Council Shaughnessy is.
Oh, no, there you are. Council Shaughnessy, did you hear me by any chance?
Yes, sorry, I'm distracted, I'm distracted by sick dog.
No problem.
Uh, this is new business, may be acted upon, roll call, majority. This is a resolution that, sorry, item number 2023-057, a resolution that the town council petitioned the county commissioners of Barnstable County to formally discontinue a section of county highway, namely Bursas Way from Massachusetts Route 132, also known as Yano Road, to Stevens Street, as read.
Second.
First and a second, and we have Attorney Charlie McLaughlin here to help us with the rationale.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, members of the council. I'm going to make a recording on these, I think, from here on, and you can play it, but as with several prior discontinuances, we're now looking at supporting quite a bit of work in the Bursas Road area, particularly up by 132. And again, this is county-owned, and we've given in the resolve, the book and page numbers that the town surveyor has provided on their research. And our intent that we will also be petitioning for and bringing to the attention of the county commissioners is to, that they abandon it, that we take it over, and that we will continue to maintain it as a public way. And again, as I've said before, that's a critical part of this abandonment process. You have to declare whether it's going to be discontinued as a road in part or in whole and not used, or whether we're going to take it over and maintain it, and so we need to make that clear for the record. The analysis, again, is that this will provide vital support for a lot of projects, but particularly up in the vicinity of 132, and some work that is anticipated there in the vicinity of the, of the intersection, and with regard to a shared use path that is being created with state funding and so forth, we need to have control of that, we'll see, and therefore the county will be ceding that, then we will be taking over and working with them to create the legal requirements for easements and so forth that the Commonwealth needs to fund that project. It's an important project, and I know DPW has been spending a lot of time bringing that together, complicated with all the different interests, but it is, is important that we do so. Fiscal impact, as with the other projects, is zero, we've been maintaining these roads for decades, and nothing will change in terms of what our obligations and commitments are to that maintenance program. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Attorney McLaughlin, and this Zoom meeting is being recorded, so we can maybe just, you know, modify it a little bit, some voice dubbing, overdubbing, and.
Perfect, perfect.
Go forward, so, and is there any council discussion in regards to this? I think like Attorney McLaughlin has said, moving forward with these roads projects, you know, public roads, especially when we, when we're taking them over, it's more than likely we're, we're maintaining them anyway, so it's really not going to have much of an impact, it's just being able to legally move forward with the projects. Anybody have any questions, concerns? Okay, not seeing any, move to a vote, please.
Counselors, Atzalis?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Cusack?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinhelber?
Yes.
We have eleven yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Counselor Atsulis, please, if you could help me, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero five eight, and refer to a public hearing, please.
This is an item of new business, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero five eight. Appropriation order in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars for the Gulf Enterprise Fund for the purpose of funding the acquisition of a utility tractor for the Gulf Maintenance Operations, referring to a public hearing, twelve one twenty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and again, referring to a public hearing. If we can move forward to a vote, please.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Have eleven yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item of new business, Vice President Schnep, please, if you could, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine. Authorization to expend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three housing choice grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for the Great Streets Downtown Hyannis Project. It may be acted upon by a roll call majority, as written.
Second.
We have a first and a second, and we have Director Jenkins with us too for the rationale, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. Here to let you know that the town of Barnstable has been awarded a housing choice grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts One Stop Grant Program. The housing choice, housing choice program is intended for planning and infrastructure improvements to meet a community's needs. The planning department applied for additional support for the Great Streets Downtown Hyannis Project, and when we applied for this grant maybe six months ago, we hope to be exactly where we are today, which is proceeding expeditiously with this project, again, designed to provide safe streets and multi-modal access for all, a vibrant and attractive downtown that supports local businesses and the people who live in Hyannis, and the creation of a functional, enduring and sustainable streetscape, and imbuing all of these objectives through the lens of enhancing transportation equity in downtown Hyannis. As noted earlier, the project is underway, and these funds will be used to expand this project scope and deliverables, including those preliminary designs for the network and key intersections, as well as an accompanying urban design plan that will help guide new development on the street in a manner consistent with the improved program.
Very good. Any, thank you for the rationale. Any council discussion? Great job getting the grant as well, to pay for this most worthy project. And not seeing any further discussion. Move to a vote, please.
Actually, President Levec, Counselor Neary has his hand up.
Well, he does. Wasn't sure if it was his foot or his hand. Counselor Neary, did you have a question?
That was my foot. I apologize.
Counselor Clark, yeah, President Levec. Good thing I picked up on that. Okay, not seeing any further discussion. Director Boye, after the vote, please.
Counselors Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendez. Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
That's eleven yes.
Thank you, Director Boye. Appreciate that. Counselor Clark, please, if you could, help me with the next item, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero.
Thank you, President Levec. This is new bears business may be acted upon by roll call majority vote. Item number twenty twenty-three dash is one dash zero six zero. Authorization to expend a fiscal year twenty twenty-three community planning grant in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for the development of a Barnstable Adult Community Center Master Plan.
You have a second?
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. You have a first and a second, and back to you, Director Jenkins, for the rationale, please.
Thank you, President Levec. This grant is, again, a part of the Commonwealth Community One Stop for Growth Program, a community planning grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. These funds will be used for the purpose of developing a master plan for the town-owned land around the Barnstable Adult Community Center. The project will evaluate the potential for the infill development of housing, particularly affordable housing targeted to seniors, coupled with the opportunity for enhanced recreational amenities in the area. There has been a longstanding desire, I know, from Director Noonan in her current and former roles, to be able to develop a walking trail along the property for recreational purposes, as well as for additional pedestrian and recreational connectivity with, with adjoining properties. This project will be an interdepartmental effort and involve public input from users of the facility as well as the community at large. And I do want to thank, again, Madeline Noonan, as well as Mark Maranaccio and the Department of Public Works in conceptualizing the sort of master planning concept to address these, these two ideas. And it was, it was them who put together a CIP for this project that we then took and were, were able to, to obtain a grant for. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. So we have the rationale. Now, any council discussion? Okay, not seeing any. Move forward to a vote, please.
Counselors Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
You have eleven yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Yeah, Counselor Starr, please, if you could, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero six one.
Wait a second, I gotta go back.
It's okay. Just referring to a public hearing as well.
Okay, this is item two zero two three dash zero six one. Appropriation order in the amount of three million eight hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Airport Enterprise Fund, operating expense budget for the purpose of purchasing aviation jet fuel for resale. So refer to a public hearing, December first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
We have a first and a second, again, referring to a public hearing. Director Boye, please, for the vote.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
It's eleven yes.
Thank you. And our last item on our agenda, Counselor Schnep, Vice President Schnep, I should say, item number twenty twenty-three dash zero six two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an item of new business, number twenty twenty-three dash zero six two. Approval of the change in purpose of the property located at one sixty-four Route one forty-nine, Marston's Mills, as shown on assessor's map, zero seven eight parcel zero seven four. It may be acted upon by a roll call vote of two thirds of the full council.
Thank you.
As written.
Great. We have a first and a second. Thank you, and we have Director of Asset Management David Anthony with us, and we also have Attorney Charlie McLaughlin, once again, and attorney, town attorney Karen Noble with us. Director Plan Development Elizabeth Jenkins, help us with the rationale.
Good evening. Sarah, if you could just put up the, the first slide to just to give people a sense of the location. This is a parcel in the center of Marston's Mills, just north of the cash market, some proximity here. It's near Liberty Hall and the library. Second slide, please. The affectionately called the House on the Hill. This is a property that was acquired in two thousand sixteen with the intention of parking. And after looking at the engineering that it was going to take and the return of that expenditure and the number of spaces with retaining walls and ATA compliant ramps, we have determined that parking is, is not the best use of this property. The house itself has become a wasting asset, and after going through an internal tier one review, which is our process where we ask all of the different departments to chime in on what use they would recommend, then it was recommended to town manager that this be considered for affordable housing. Next slide, please. The reason that we are before you tonight is because in the deed and because of the acquisition specifically for parking, we need to ask the town council to consider making a change to affordable housing. This is driven by the language of Mass General Law, Chapter thirty B, Section sixteen, which dictates how a town will dispose of real property, meaning land, and we have a number of steps. We have a number of steps that we will be following. But this first step is to do some housekeeping to put us in a position to plan for the RFP, for the Declaration of Surplus, and then eventually for disposition back through the town council to the successful bidder of an RFP. You have the rationale in front of you for more detail on some of the, the parking designs that were put into place, but at this point in time, that's the end of my presentation. Pending questions.
Thank you for the rationale. Any council, do you have any questions? Counselor Starr.
So I, I wanted to ask if, Mr. Anthony, if this, if this piece of land, could it be, could, could somebody redevelop it for affordable housing and put it, excuse me, put in four, like four units? Or is there not enough parking? Or, I mean, assuming this, the sewer is going to go right by it at some point.
It's interesting you bring up the sewer because the sewer connection is the end of phase two, which is sometime away. I would obviously defer to the expertise that Director Jenkins has on some of the specifics as to what could be built. It's just under one acre. But we feel that there is an opportunity here for affordable housing.
Yep.
Director Jenkins, did you want to address that?
Thank you, President Levec, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. The Planning and Development Department, working through our housing coordinator, Ryan Bennett, conducted an informal and preliminary analysis of the potential developability of the site that would be suitable and, and in keeping with the, the neighborhood and, and village character. The initial recommendation from Ms. Bennett is that the site would be suitable, again, given the lot size restrictions, the topography restrictions, the Title V restrictions for the potential redevelopment of one, two, three, between one and three affor- affordable homeownership units.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jenkins. Any other questions? Also wanted to, oh, go back to you, Counselor Starr.
I'm just thinking here. So if it gets sold, can it be redeveloped? Can it, can it be torn down and redeveloped? Is that what you're saying, or it would have to wait till the sewer got there?
So it would not have to wait till the sewer got there. There, I mean, there's an existing home on the property that serves by a Title V system. I would suggest as part, as, as part of any agreement for disposition of the property that we address any requirements for potential future sewer connection, part of that agreement.
Okay. I mean, it, it seems like we want to develop close into village centers, and this is, you can't much, get much closer to the village center here.
It's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Pretty much in the bullseye, sir. Any other questions? I also wanted to recognize Attorney Kate Conley that's with us as well. Thank you for being with us. Counselor Neary, I believe that was your hand. Oh, you just waved us away. Oh, you're just saying hello to, to Attorney Conley. You're so kind. Any other, oh, waving back. Okay, stop, please. That's good. All right, so very confusing for me. It's after ten. Any other legitimate hand raising questions? Counselor Shaughnessy, that's cheating. Okay, so that being said, I actually have a quick question. On the slide, it said that we can go through disposition and then RFP. Is it possible to go RFP disposition?
I think as far as process, there's a number of things that will happen concurrently. We have, we have to go in secured appraisal, for example. That can be done now. We do have a couple of technical pieces to do with DPW regarding an easement to be permanently attached to the deed and reflected in the deed because of the location of the sidewalk. We do have to restore the driveway access depending on what the plans are as they come in, so there are a bunch of different smaller steps that can happen at the same time as we move forward, but essentially once we get clearance to start to move forward in earnest, we can develop the RFP, and we can put the RFP out on the street, and ultimately it circles back to the town council to approve of that disposition in its final case, so that then we can transfer the property to whoever wins the RFP, and they can begin the building process.
Excellent. What, what would you think the timeline be? And again, I'm not, nothing's written in stone, but what do you think the timeline could be possibly of getting a, an RFP out?
Well, I think we have some work to do as far as the final development of the, of the easement, of the plan for the driveway restoration. We do need to take a look at how we're going to evaluate any proposals that come in. We've already done some preliminary work. We have some direction from Mass Housing Development that gives us the criteria that we would use to evaluate any proposals that come in. We have gone through already the tier one review, where we include all of the departments in town. They give their recommendations as to what can be used. I think if we can spend some time developing the RFP while we move through some of those other details, perhaps in late winter, we can put an RFP out on the street for this, and, and see if we can get some response relatively quickly. Once the RFP hits, there's a period of time that we're mandated to put it out at least thirty days. So we could be looking at, if we issued it in February, we could be back to you potentially March or April, but that's kind of a perfect scenario.
Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any other council discussion? Hey, not seeing any. Move to a vote, please.
Counselors Mendez.
Yes.
Neary.
Yeah.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atsulis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
It's eleven yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being with us. Really appreciate it, and. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being with us. Really appreciate it. In a relatively short meeting, who knew? And uh with that, I would take a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Shaughnessy.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Steinhelber.
Yes.
Atzalis.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Cullum.
Yes.
Cusack.
Yes.
Levec.
Yes.
Mendes.
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Take care.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.